This conference will now be recorded.
Bless his heart.
I just want to point out to everybody, we got new face shields in to protect us.
Safety first.
Thanks to staff for getting that for us.
So what we're here for, Mayor?
I got my new, uh, my new fire department mask that my mother made for me.
I think everybody appreciates a sense of humor at this point in time.
Well, good.
It beats crying.
I agree.
But my glasses keep fogging up.
That is a problem.
Hello, Darcy, how are you?
Sorry. Good, how are you all?
Living the dream.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know what dream this is, maybe a nightmare, but if you want to dream.
You got a good turnout tonight.
Yeah.
Let's see. See, I got caller number one on the line. Is that, is that Don Barthlow?
I don't think so, Mayor. I think he was gonna, he was gonna be there video in.
There we go. Frank's got him a mask now. His is fancier than ours.
Yeah.
Frank, is, Frank, is that for fencing?
This is actually.
For scuba diving?
It's for skunk diving.
Oh, oh, good. Everybody talk about Frank, he can't hear.
It looks like something my wife makes me wear at night so I'm not snoring.
Let's see, yes, right here.
I have an icon with no initials and no microphone. Somebody's in limbo.
Ed, do you have my name? This is Denise Sellers.
I do.
Yes.
Okay, well, I wondered, maybe that was me, because I didn't have my, my going, so, all right.
I got Denise Sellers.
Yeah, I have Preston.
Oh, no, that's not Denise Sellers upstairs, that's Dan Sellers upstairs.
They may have been the Elliott's.
Well, I'm on, I'm on the iPad downstairs, because I'm gonna paint while I listen to you guys, and he's upstairs.
I've got Preston, Denise, Donna, caller number one, Tom Monahan, Darlene with Heinz Group. Second Denise.
Tom Lawrence is on as well.
Oh, yeah. I can see your picture, but it doesn't have your names, huh? All right, I got 6:30, let's get started. Time to get, time to get serious. All right. We reconvene from recess into open section, session to act as de, act as deemed appropriate in city council's discretion regarding, A, consultation with legal counsel and possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item, B, consideration of potential interlocal agreement with Travis County for the COVID-19 relief funding. No actions are taken. Regular council meeting is beginning. Sandra, please note. I see a DB. Is that Barthlow?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm here.
All right, I believe we have every council member here.
They are.
All right, so we will start with citizen comments. In accordance with open meetings, that councils prohibited from acting or discussing, other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. And I did not receive any requests prior to the meeting for anybody to address council during this section. So I will assume if we have any comments, it's going to be on agenda items. And we will move into items of community interest. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.0415, the city council may report on any of the following agenda items, expressions of thanks, gratitude and condolences, information regarding holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders regarding city council events, reminders regarding community events, and health and safety announcements. And I have nothing. Have no items that I can think of. Maybe, does anybody have anything for items of community interest?
Mr. Mayor, this is Dave Williams.
Yes, Dave.
I just want, I just want to ask the citizens of Lago Vista to please fill out their census online. We're way behind in filling out our census for 2020. And that, that affects our federal dollars, so please go online and fill out the census. Thank you.
Yes, and I will add to that. A good example, the CARES Act is providing funding, you know, to different cities and counties and stuff, and it's based on a per capita basis. Smaller cities and counties in the state of Texas are, are being funded at $55 per person. Based on our 2019 population, the census has us at 7,556 people. Uh, here in the city, we're, we're pretty confident we're closer to the 9,000 mark, because we know we have over 4,000 active water utility accounts. So just that discrepancy in numbers from the census and what we believe we have, shorts the city about $50,000 in potential relief funding aid that we could provide to businesses and citizens in Lago Vista. So, thank you, Dave. Very good point. Anybody else? All right, we will move into public hearing and possible action. First consideration, so this is the first time any of these have been heard. Item number three, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit application pursuant to Section 17 of Chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow for the addition of a detached accessory building that is larger and taller than allowed by right at 21003 Green Park Drive and Country Club Estates, Section 7, Lot 1477. And I will open the public hearing at 6:35 PM. All right. Overview. So, if y'all recall this application, it first went to Planning and Zoning back in February. So this application has been pending for quite some time in one form or another. It was actually denied by Planning and Zoning back in February, and then brought to city council. Because Planning and Zoning had denied it, city council referred it back to Planning and Zoning. And that was based on the fact that there was some confusion and the applicant themselves were not in attendance at either of the meetings. So it was sent back. Planning and Zoning again heard it at the April 9th meeting. But they were not pleased with the application, and they voted to defer consideration of the application until their next meeting. So that was in May. So at their May meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission was satisfied with the changes. Says here, Planning and Zoning, the five of the six members present recommended that the city council approve the application. Those affirming the recommendation seemed impressed by the improvements from the previous effort. So Planning and Zoning was satisfied with the changes that the applicant had made. And so they have voted five to, five to one to, to approve or recommend approval of the application. Uh, in their application, or in their recommendation, they did make one, one sub, um, one change to the application. The application said that the building would be 18 feet above the slab. Planning and Zoning approved the application with the change that it be 18 feet from the highest point of the property. So as we move into this consideration, note that it's 18 feet from the highest point of the land, not the slab. And that's the summary. If there's anybody on staff who would like to add to this at that point, please let me know, Roy or Josh. Nope. All right, so. Stat, uh, city council, questions, comments for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have been talking with Mike and Brenda about this for quite some time. They have been over backwards to change this arrangement to something that they feel will be in addition to their property and also will not interfere with other properties around them. Where they're putting this on their lot gives them more screening than most people have from the golf course and from the lot that's going to be beside them. And they have, have made a genuine effort to do what's necessary so that they can get this. It's significantly what the original proposal was.
Yes, Frank?
Question for Roy. Roy, I'm looking at the packet at page 26. Is that what we're considering?
Make sure I'm seeing the same packet you are. Mine are, mine are all separate, hang on. That shows to be a drawing, is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and there's some old drawings and new. The, the, let me put it this way, the drawings that are current will not have the red mark superseded on them. Anything that's not current will have that red note somewhere on the drawing.
And 26 of the packet is cur, is what they looked at.
Okay.
Okay. So 26 is what we're considering. And so that means they have got to build it just like page 26.
If that's, if that's your decision, yes, sir.
What happens?
I'm sorry?
What happens if more trees than are shown on the site plan get cut down?
That was certainly one of the concerns, and, and you, if you want to make that an explicit condition, other than the protected trees, you should make that as a condition. That was, that was part of the discussion at P&amp;Z.
Why does it need to be a condition if the site plan is what we're considering?
Well, because there may not, you know, uh, I'm not so sure those trees are actually accurate. They may simply be representative of what the person that drew them thought was there. We, we don't have an actual tree survey that's part of the submission. Now, and it came up at P&amp;Z, they can't remove any protected trees without a permit, you know, and, and the normal permitting process, and either replace them or pay the fee in lieu of. But there may be unprotected trees that, that are being indicated by this rendering. But I, I don't think they're intended to represent actual trees or a tree survey. But Mr. Elliott may be able to correct that.
Yeah, Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, I worked in the engineering business for, for 43 years, so I'm, I'm a draftsman by trade. And I went out and I physically measured off of my pulled property line, string line, to make sure they're accurate. And I also moved the building 42 feet from where I originally had it in order to save every one of those trees with exception of maybe one or two cedar trees. But all the oaks will stay intact, and I'm trying to retain as much natural vegetation for maximum screening. So those, those drawing, those trees that are on those drawings are very accurate. I can assure you. I laid it out in AutoCAD.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor?
Arch.
Couple, a couple of, uh, one is a question, one's a comment. Uh, my comment is that you reduced the size of that building to a 40 by 40, which earlier had been 51 by 51, is that correct? Okay, so that means that you're, that means that you're, the square footage of your building that you intend to build is going to be 1,600 square feet. The size of your, of your residence is 2,552. So one of the requirements in our Code of Ordinances requires that the building that you construct be no more than half of the size of your main structure. So I looked at, I looked at those numbers, and it looks like the, the building that you're intending to construct is going to be about 63% of the size of your, of your home. That's not outrageously big, however, I'm just a little concerned that if we make an exception here, that we'll have to make future exceptions for other people. That's, that's really, uh, the, the one question that I have is for, for Roy. Are we going to continue to allow the construction of other buildings such as the, this that are larger than half, or do we need to change ordinance to make allowance for that? Then the other thing that I, is, we had the flood a year and a half ago, okay, a year, a little over a year ago. We, um, I remember that your neighbor to the east of you had some major flooding problems.
They had the flooding.
I'm sorry?
They had the flooding. It was their house they flooded.
Okay, so my question was going to be, would you have concerns about flooding in this place? In this, uh, building that you're constructing?
Go ahead and click it. Okay, I'm online. Okay. I think the, the issue with the, the flooding has been fixed. So the neighbor to my east had a, I mean, these, these stones that they put in like a dam has forced the water in another direction out towards the golf course into a swell that was positioned out there to direct the water from the other side of his house out to the course. I do not believe that we will, I mean, I hate to say it, ever see again. But we've, uh, we've also just, as of this week, completed a couple of pipes underground to help with alleviating any other additional surface water drainage that would come from across the road, and we, uh, we coupled it to a, a culvert that was existing, and it carries that surface water out to the golf course as well. So we've worked, I think we've worked the issue out to where we should never see a problem with the type of water that we saw two years ago.
Brenda can understand.
Okay, I'll start over. I said we didn't actually make the water go to the golf course. We, it's going in that direction to a ditch or swell that's behind our neighbor's house and our house that connects to the creek that takes us down the property line. I didn't want you to think we were flooding the golf course.
Yeah, I was more concerned about you than the golf course.
Well, thank you.
And, and Arch, I'll, I'll address your, your first question that you posed to Roy. Yeah, obviously because of the size of this project is one of the reasons why they needed the variance request. You could, you could say approving it does kind of set a, a precedence, but every case is handled on an individual basis. And anybody else that is wanting to go over the 50% would have to submit a variance request as well. And just because we did, if we do approve this one, just because we do, does not mean that we have to approve any other variance request. They have to be considered on a case-by-case basis. And Roy, if you have anything to add to that?
Not about that, no, sir, I would agree. I might point out, however, just in case it, it's influential, understand that that 63% estimation, if you will, is based on the interior enclosed side of the accessory building. It excludes the porch, but yet in comparing it to the primary residence, that includes the garage and the porches. So that number is slightly understated, but, you know, once again, we would ask that you be real clear, even going back to the, to the accuracy of the landscaping. The landscaping that's shown on the site plan is not consistent with the landscaping that is shown on the building elevations. If one of them is accurate and the other one's not, we kind of need to know which ones we're being told to hold to. I assume you're saying the ones on your site plan are accurate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so.
The locations in the site plan and plan.
The elevations show something different, what, what we were getting at.
Have we lost audio?
I don't know who we're hearing, but I don't think it's any of us.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying anything, because I thought somebody was trying to talk.
Yeah, that sounds like a television. Or bleed over from the internet. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I still have concerns, even though we're gonna vote on this individually, that somebody cannot use this as reference for another amendment or variant of the two-to-one coordinates. I don't, I, I, this may be standalone, but I think it would be brought into play if somebody else has the same situation.
You lost me in. Well, and that is, that is true. But we've granted how many different variances over the past, you know, decade that anybody could probably have, could bring in and reference on their application. So I wouldn't say this would be the, the first one. This is not, I would not say this is the one setting the precedence, because they, we have approved other variances in the past.
And Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, may I speak?
Who is that?
Hey, David.
Dave Williams, yes.
If, if you notice, this, this took place back in January, and now we're in May. So there were several different variations, and this was much bigger. And the applicant had to adjust its plans many times in order for P&amp;Z to approve this. So someone else that's coming in front of P&amp;Z would have to go probably through the same sort of scrutiny in order for P&amp;Z to approve it. So it's not going to be a precedence. We've been, somehow we've gotten in this situation where you think because the law is a, a certain thing, you know, like the 15-foot and the 18-foot height, you know, that, that was back in 91. We don't live in 91, we live in 2020. So the rules, even though they're still around, they still can change. So I don't, I don't see this being a precedent that anyone that brings a building this size is going to be approved. That's not the case. The other thing I would like to say is, all the citizens showed up to P&amp;Z meeting that this property to support this applicant. And I thought that was very nice that they showed up to a P&amp;Z meeting to give their opinion and so through there. So I don't see anything wrong with it.
Roy? Did, uh, did this application have any notification requirements for the surrounding properties?
Absolutely, and, and you have some comments in your packet. I think they're all in support.
Okay.
I don't know if they were based on the actual drawings or not, but, uh, I think they may even have been based on the earlier version of the packet, if they were, if, if anything, which was even larger and taller. I don't think we received anybody retracting it or anybody adding to those comments.
Yeah, now, now I found them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, I see two, and they both say, and, and they're both in support. Anybody else from council? All right, well, this is a public hearing. I didn't have anybody fill out a request to speak, but at this time, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or do something to let me know you would like to speak. All right. Well, I'm not getting any notifications. Is that the television again?
Yes.
Okay. So. this is the first, this is the first reading of this public hearing. Do we wanna, do we wanna leave the public hearing open or do we wanna close it and, and take any action on this tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That we close the public hearing and that we take a vote on this. These people have been trying to do something with this since middle of last year. And we have delayed them for six months trying to get this through P and Z.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then at 6:56. And it is open for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the application for conditional use pursuant to section 17 of chapter 14.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second, and I have a legal clarification. Since planning and zoning made that requirement for the 18 feet above the highest point instead of the slab, does that need to be included in our motion as well?
Yes, Mayor. Any, anything that you want specific for this application, you need to have, that needs to be included in your motion.
Okay, so then I will pose that question to Councilman Weatherly. The planning and zoning recommended it, it'd be 18 feet from the highest point of the land as opposed to the slab. Is that something you wanna add into your motion or you wanna leave it as written in the application?
Uh, may I?
Do we have to?
Question.
I'm sorry.
I had a question. We have to do anything about trees on this?
I wouldn't think so. I've been on that lot. The, the trees of value are the ones that he's leaving. The only thing I think he would have to take out is a couple of cedar trees in the middle of the lot. Is that not correct, Mike?
That is correct. We will be not taking any oak trees or any other trees besides the, a couple of cedars. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mike, I would ask you, the highest point of your lot is at the front of that lot, is it not? And this is actually beyond the down end of it, so 18 feet from the slab is not going to interfere with your plans at all.
No, sir, not at all.
All right. In order to make it as P and Z requested, I would make an amendment to my motion that we include P and Z's request if it be 18 feet from the highest point of the lot.
I'll second that.
All right, so I've got the, the amended motion and the second. And Frank, did you have a, a comment for further discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, then. I've got the motion, I've got the second. I will go down the roll. Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
What is the vote at this point? I can't hear.
So the motion was to approve the application with the stipulation that it be built at 18 feet above the highest point instead of the slab, according to what P and Z recommended. And we have gone through two places, one and two, and they have both said aye.
Thank you.
So now I'm at place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the application is granted unanimous. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much, Council. Thank you.
And we move into agenda item number four.
Four.
The logo.
What page?
This is public hearing. The Laguna Vista City Council will hold a public hearing to consider ordinance number 20-06-04-01 and ordinance of the City Council of Laguna Vista, Texas, amending section 20 of chapter 14, the zoning ordinance regarding the tree preservation and landscaping requirements applicable to all property within the municipal limits. And I will open the public hearing at 7:01 PM.
What page is this on?
Forty-three.
Thank you.
So I show the ordinance, the cover sheet starts at page 41 and then the information are 43. The ordinance is on 43. So for the benefit of our members of the audience, I have taken the, the new, the new zoning ordinance and I have highlighted a few points of interest just to point out for, again, for the members of the audience there. And I wanted to point out that some definitions, the allowable building area is the area below and extending 13 feet beyond the building foundation, including any patios and porches. So when you, somebody says they're gonna be clearing in the allowable building area, you know it's the size of the slab and 13 feet from, from the foundation. You've heard us mention in the previous item, agenda item, protected tree. A protracted, protected tree shall mean any tree except ash juniper with a main trunk diameter of 10 inches or larger, measured at 40 inches above the ground. So that is the legal definition of our protected trees. Removal of protected trees, a permit is required. So yes, anytime anybody wants to remove a tree over 10 inches at 40 inches above the ground, it is, it does require a permit. This new ordinance also updates the replacement of protected trees under section E, number three. The replacement trees must be a minimum of two inches measured with a caliper at 40 inches above the ground level. So if you're removing, if you're removing trees, your replacement trees cannot be any smaller than two inches in diameter. When removing protected trees in the allowable building area, replacement trees shall be at a ratio of one to one. So if you remove one 10 inch tree, then you've got to replace it with the equivalent of 10 inches, knowing that the smallest can be two inches. So that would require, if they're all two inches, that would require five, five replacement trees. Trees, if you remove a, a tree that is greater than 10 inches and less than 36 inches in diameter, then the ratio is one and a half to one. So if it's a 20 inch tree, you gotta replace it with 30 inches of trees. If it's a tree larger than 36 inches in diameter, the ratio is two to one. Those ratios, both for the, the medium sized tree and the tree over 36, that ratio can be reduced if they plant larger replacement trees with a minimum size of three inches. But the point there is to make sure that everybody is aware that however many inches of trees you remove, you're gonna have to replace them. Another point that I wanted to bring out here is if it is not possible or feasible to provide for the replacement of the total number of inches of protected trees to be removed, the owner or controlling agent of the property shall pay a fee and the fee schedule, pay a fee the city in lieu of tree replacement in accordance with appendix A fee schedule. Any such fees collected by the city shall be placed in a special fund and the use of these funds shall be restricted for planting of trees on city property or other areas as determined by the city council. So if for some reason a builder ends up having to pay a fee instead of putting in a replacement tree, I want the citizens to know that that money does go into a dedicated fund and is restricted for use of just planting trees. In addition to the required tree survey, all protected trees to be removed shall be depicted on the site plan for the project, including those in the allowable building area. The fee for any removed protected tree that can be detected on aerial or other available imagery, but not documented on the required tree survey shall be assessed as if it were a 36 inch caliper tree or larger, where measured at 40 inches from the ground. Uh, let's see. Some more notes in this ordinance. Landscaping, one or two family residential areas. So they have to have at least six shrubs required to be located preferably in a plant bedding area, which is like a flower bed or something like that. And the minimum number of trees per lot are required as provided in the following. Eight, under 8,000 square feet, two trees. Eight to 10,000 square feet, three trees. 10,000 to 14,000, four trees. 14 to 18,000 square feet, five trees. 18,000 square feet or more, six trees. And let me see. And that is all the highlighted points that I wanted to make sure that the audience was aware of. Because I know we've had questions on those type of things when it comes to our tree ordinance. And I have a question at this point, Roy. It mentions the fee schedule and reading through our executive summary, the bulk of the effort can be summarized as focusing on two significant areas. First, the bulk of erosion control requirements were removed from the zoning ordinance. And for more detailed regulations specifically including measures to deal with our often severe topography was now be located in chapter three. Separating vegetation that is a component of a permanent erosion and control measures from required trees and shrubs will also likely facilitate our enforcement efforts going forward. The second major result of this ordinance involves a significant increase in the incentives to preserve protected trees. Many of the exceptions that were added when any form of development was rare have been removed. New incentives were added in hopes that it would encourage a more serious effort to customize designs with the look, goal of preserving protected trees. These incentives increasing as the size of the protected tree in question increases. It says here, subcommittee, the subcommittee was formed of planning and zoning commission members and building and standard commissions. The subcommittee would also like to forward a recommendation to amend appendix A of the fee schedule. I did, really, my question is, I did not see appendix A in our packet. So is that something that's gonna be coming back?
No, sir. The, the, this came from, you know, being chapter 14, the, it's gotta go through P and Z and they recommend the change to 14. The recommended change to appendix A is simply the subcommittee telling you that they think the fee's too low. And if you want us to advertise a public hearing for the fee increase, you know, you would need to direct us to do that. That's just simply them adding their opinion that $50 per caliper inch is below the actual cost to the city if we were to plant those trees.
Okay, so during our budget process over the next couple of months, when we get to the portion where we're reviewing our fee schedule, I'm assuming that would probably be a really good time to take a look at this.
That was simply, we did an awful lot of research in, in these three areas, you know, that were, you know, and, and they did that research and they wanted to forward that recommendation.
All right. I will make that note. All right, so that is all the background that I have. I'm sorry it was lengthy, but I had some points that I wanted to make sure that the members of the audience were aware of. Uh, so at this time, any council members, I see Tim has his hand up.
On the bottom of page 53, under chapter 14 zoning, this is the tree survey.
Yes.
I mean, this drawing preferred, prepared by a registered professional land surveyor specifically exempted below. Who proves the exemptions?
Well, no, the exemptions are listed, you know.
Right.
When you don't have to have that. It's gotta be, it's not discretionary. There, there are. And I'll give you an example. If it's an existing residence and you want to take out two or three protected trees, you can ask the building official to come by and verify their existence and save the money of hiring a surveyor to do it.
Okay, so that's the point I was getting is our building inspector.
Absolutely. That's one of the exemptions. There's a few more. But they're all listed. They're not, they're not imaginary or discretionary. They're all listed. And I'll, I'll explain the, the, the point behind that. Right now, you know, there, there's not much consequences for, for not doing this or not doing it accurately. There was a definite desire to make people try a little harder to save trees. That's simple.
Hi, Eric.
Yes.
Roy? Roy, where are the exemptions listed?
Uh, let me get to them.
Page 59. Starts at the very bottom of page 59 and 60.
That's a long ways from page 53. It's a long ordinance, unfortunately, but. And it includes the, the diseased trees and all that stuff.
Yeah, but that. That's, that wasn't Tim's question.
Right. I'm sorry.
And what you described is not what the section on page 59 exempts. In other words, Tim, are you with me on, on that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, okay, if there's an exemption, what is it and who proves it?
Well, it's not, that, what, what Roy stated is not listed on, in that section on page 60.
I'll find it for you.
Okay.
I just, I think we've had trees removed without consequence. Just not, without a permit, without permission, without anything. They just cut them. Well, and, and our tree surveys that are not necessarily certified by somebody responsible for their accuracy. And that's kind of one of the reasons we're dealing with this. Well, you know, we, like I said, the reason we're dealing with this now is I believe we had large trees removed without consequence and nobody could go back and say, well, you violated this thing. Right. How do we do it from the get-go? And who from the city approves that removal or says this is what you've gotta do to replace it? And under what circumstances? Because we don't know. If a guy starts clearing land, we, and you might have to survey it before they clear land. Right, the exception. Right, uh, the exception is in, uh, C three on page fifty-four. If you'll read that entire long paragraph. That's the exception. It starts, subject to prior written documentation. From the development services department. Verifying the size of no more than three protected trees proposed for removal. Shall, a registered professional land surveyor shall not be required to certify the required trees.
What was the first sentence you did?
Well, it's in the middle of the paragraph, but.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at the wrong section. Thanks.
Right. Yeah, that, that was my bad.
Just couldn't remember where. It's so long, it's. Believe me.
That was my bad because I went down to where it said exceptions and gave you, sent you to page fifty-nine, so.
And those are exceptions. They're just exceptions to something else. They're, they're the exceptions dealing with dead and diseased trees. Which is. We're, we're not suggesting you ought to keep those or. Anything else, but you still need to document.
What, what that sentence says is, uh, protected tree shall be any tree. Except an ash juniper. It's right in the middle of the page.
Yes.
So we can declare war on every ash juniper anywhere, but you have to leave the rest of them.
Well, the, the ones that are ten inches and above.
Hmm, okay.
The, this, yeah, and that's consistent with state legislation.
I'm just trying to figure out if there's way for greater protection. For us. On, uh, when they can clear a tree and who's, you know.
Yeah, our ordinance. The, the.
Well, yeah, we have an ordinance, but nobody pays attention to a lot of the ordinances we have.
And the, the consequences are not as severe as they are now. And now the, the thought was very clear cut. A registered professional land surveyor, you know, is. If he falsifies a documentation that he certifies, there are in theory consequences to that.
Right, but you're giving somebody an out from using a registered tree surveyor.
Not without us, not without.
Looking at it. No, it says on, uh, what was it, fifty-three maybe? It says or.
Right, but, but look at fifty-four. That, that. That's the only exemption. Is. On fifty-four, C three. And it says, subject to prior written documentation. That's the exception. Is us looking at it. That means if, if you don't get a registered professional land surveyor to survey it, our department has to lay eyes on it.
All right.
I think, I think the only problem. I think the only problem we're really going to see is, uh. People that don't even come in and apply for an application. They just go out there and cut their trees down.
And that's, we added a bit about if we can. Find some aerial photographs that suggest a tree was there. You're going to pay for it as if it was thirty-six inches top big, whether it was three or, or, or thirty-six.
Okay.
So, uh, we added consequences, uh, you know, we'll do our best.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we can do, I suppose.
Those, those are the kind of things we added. Was to create consequences.
Is there any way you could say a tree, uh, professional land surveyor? Or. Representative of Lago Vista approves it? That's their, those are their choices before they start cutting.
Well, that, that's, that's basically what it says. If you like that language better, we can make that change.
No. Please be less confusing.
Well, I mean, this is pretty specific, you know, it's a limited number of trees. And we have to document it. And, and give you a piece of paper that says we saw them and we. Agree that that's all that's there.
All right, well, I defer to you, Roy. You're. Much sharper on this than I am.
Like I said.
Yeah, no, I understand. You've put in the protection and I, I'll accept it. I guess.
Here, here, here was the exact conversation with, from one of the committee members. Before it always said registered professional land surveyor only. The complaint was, what if I have an existing house that I'm gonna add on to? And it's, are you really gonna make me have a surveyor here because I'm gonna take down two protected trees? Why don't I just ask you to come look at it? So we added that.
I'm thinking more of a new build. Lot clearing.
But there's no exception to that.
All right, well, you've got the, you've got it built in there, so. Uh, just, I'm just trying to, how do you protect somebody that doesn't tell us? I don't think you can do that.
We, we require them to have a, anything that's new construction. Uh, without an existing house. There's no exceptions written into the ordinance.
All right. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. Well, if that's all the questions and comments I have from council, I will. At this point, open it up to members of the audience for questions and comments.
Hello, I know I have three minutes. Okay, so I have a question. Is this ordinance better because there's a lot in it and it's confusing? It's really confusing. So are you making it more protection of the tree, Roy? And less like jibber jabber so people understand, like, look, you cut a tree down, we're gonna fine you. And if you don't hurt here to our. Ordinance. Then you're gonna get, you know, more, we're gonna come at you more. But then I also have a question. Who is the person that is our surveyor? Are they a surveyor of trees or is it just? Then the engineer, the city engineer? Because that's really important. If you haven't been. To school about trees. You don't know an ash from a mulberry. So who is our representative? Who, and that's, I guess, all I want to know.
Would you like me to answer that, Mayor?
Um, well, I can address. I'll let you add to it. Uh, yes, we are, we are trying to, uh. Clarify the ordinance and make sure that everybody knows. What our. Tree restrictions are. We are tightening up those restrictions, uh, making more requirements. Um, to make sure everybody does know that they have to apply. And either has a, have to have the tree survey. Or in certain cases, uh, have city staff come out and, and, and look at the trees. According to that exemption. And then. When we do address the issue of the fee schedule, the punitive damages. Could be much worse, uh, than what we have in our ordinances right now. So. Um, changing it from fifty dollars per inch to the recommended two hundred and fifty dollars per inch. Um. It's something we will take a look at. And then if we, you know, if you're found to have cut down a tree without. Submitting an application, without the tree survey, without city staff coming to look at it. And we, we discover, then you're fined at the level of thirty-six inches and greater. So. You know, you could cut down a, an eleven inch tree. And when staff catches you, you're going to pay the fine for the thirty-six inch. Rate. Um. So yes, this ordinance is to definitely make our. Our, our ordinance more. Restrictive and to help. Encourage saving protected trees. Um. Roy, Josh, I'll let y'all answer is. Who are we using as our? Side of the surveyor? Who are, who's our tree expert?
We, we, to the best of my knowledge, we have no registered professional land surveyor on staff. Will be following the same rules as anybody else. The ordinance previously exempted the city. That, that is suggested to be removed.
So we, at that point, if we were going to do some tree removal, we would have to go out and hire. A professional surveyor to come in and do that for us.
Right, same way we do other, we hire out all our surveying work. That, that it requires an actual plaid or a survey or any, any official documents. We don't do those now. Eric may go shoot a grape, but that's. That's not for that reason or would meet these requirements. But I don't think we have any land surveyors on staff to my knowledge.
All right.
Unless Victor pursues that license, I doubt we'll have one.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, because I, I just want people to be aware that, you know, because. We are on this limestone foundation. That when you're removing a tree and you've taken it down. Look at what happens to the area around it. I mean, you could look straight up my street where they've cleared, you know, not, not next to me, but up my street. And. Once those trees are gone, it almost makes like a desert oasis. And, and I'm, I'm just really, really hoping whatever you guys are deciding right now. That you think about this, that when the tree is gone, there's more heat, there's no shade. The land becomes like a washway or, you know, and, and so it, it's very, very important, I believe, for Lago Vista. To keep the trees. I believe it's what brings a lot of the people out here is because it's so beautiful and it's trees and it's, you know, you can see the nature and all that and I. I am just hoping that you make this so tough. Because, you know. You, you can't bring them back. You can't. Once they're gone, they're gone. And that's what everybody's been saying. Well, it's done now. And it's like. Well, you can't just go on with the insinuation while it's done now. You know, and it really makes to have people and builders and people like that and people who. Ouch, I forgot, you know, that, that it, that you're protecting what Lago Vista is good for, especially with the oaks and. You know, I mean, do I like the cedars? No, but they actually are holding carbon, you know? So when you cut them down, it's releasing it into the ozone and you get a lot more problems. But that's it. That's all I wanted to say. So thanks.
Yeah, and this ordinance is definitely, it's geared to when they're, when they're building. If somebody's going to build a house, you know, they, they do have the allowable building area in the additional thirteen feet. But it's supposed to encourage people to leave all the oats and other trees. Besides the ash juniper in their yard. Um. Because if I'm not mistaken, this, Roy, this requires a separate application. Is that not, is that not true?
Well, when there's a new building permit, it's required as part of that submitted. And they cannot remove the trees. Uh, we're not going to give them a tree removal permit on the basis of a new building without there being a building permit application. Uh. And, and like I said, before there were some freebies. There are no more freebies, you know, anymore. There, there's, you remove a protected tree, uh. And I'll give you a perfect example. Uh, people are gonna think long and hard about where they put the driveways from now on. About whether there's a tree there or not. And if they don't, they're, they'll pay more. Or, or plant more. That's fact.
All right, anybody else? Anybody else from the audience?
Yeah. Oh. Tim has a question.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I had opened it up to the audience, so I was gonna let them finish and then go back to council. But if that's all my audience members, then I will. Tim, I will recognize you.
Okay, before we act on this, do we have to put in? I know we took out the fifty dollars as lined out. Do we have to put in a dollar amount someplace else?
Now, it's. And you can't really act on the fee. Because. It requires a special public hearing and advertising for fee increases. So it, it's. I'm from Louisiana. We call it land yet. The, the committee wants you to know their opinion about something you didn't ask about, basically. They're adding that little extra bit of information for you.
Well, so we can act on this this evening then?
We can if we so choose, yes.
All right, thank you.
Frank.
Back to Tim's question, and I may have missed this. Does this ordinance? Cut out the fifty dollar fee somewhere?
No, sir. It leaves.
Right now, right now, it stays at fifty dollars until. We decide whether or not we want to review our fee structure. And the subcommittee has recommended that we do that and increase the fee to. Two hundred and fifty dollars per cow per inch as opposed to what is currently fifty. So that is just something for us to consider at future agenda, future meetings. Do we want to go back and look at? The rate structure, our fee structures and. Potentially increase this fee.
Yeah, Tim, that's not what Tim asked. Did, Tim, did you find something in this ordinance that lined out fifty dollars?
Yes, on page fifty-six, item six, if I'm reading it correctly.
Right, but. The reason it's lined out there is because it got moved, but. The, the idea is that it now references appendix A. Which already includes that same fifty dollars. This ordinance says you'll pay a fee according to the fee schedule.
Okay.
And that's. Was in the schedule. And it's still there.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's in same page number seven.
It, it got moved, but instead of being redundant with the fee schedule, this time we refer to the fee schedule.
We're gonna need two computers at every meeting.
Yes, Kate Williams.
Oh, man, saving my. Fanny tonight.
Roy, can I ask you? You gave an example of a tree that. Was eleven inches. And they removed it. And they're going to be penalized at the thirty-five or thirty-six diameter. And if, so they're fined. Is that tree replanted on that lot? Is it a tree replanted or are we just finding them?
Well, I mean, they are going to be obligated to either replace it on their lot or pay the fee. And we will, without documentation to the contrary. When we can document that there was a protected tree there, but we don't know how big it is. They're going to either pay the fee or replace it on the basis of thirty-six inches.
But they pay the fee. Is there still going to be a tree put on their lot? That's what I want to know.
They, it's their, it's their choice. Uh, now I think the, the ordinance obligates them to replace it unless it's unfeasible. And, and that's what's their choice. And the discretion is, is whether it really is unfeasible or not. They're, they're supposed to replace it. There, it's not just, oh, I don't want to. Supposed, supposed to be, I, I don't have enough room to, to plant these things and build what I want to build.
But if I have, but if I have enough money. I might cut down the protected tree and just pay the fine. I mean, I, I would like, I would like to know that a tree is gonna go back up on that lot.
They have an obligation to prove that. It, their building plans are in the way of making it unfeasible. You know, that are else, and I'll give you an example. You know, we have spacing on the trees so they'll thrive. You know, we don't want them doing that either. You know, where these things will starve each other. You know, but. The, the answer is, is unless there's a good reason for them to, they, they're supposed to replace them.
Okay, thank you.
I know that's, I know that's easy when we got builders and those type of. Activities going on, but let's say we have an existing. An existing house. Somebody just has a tree in their backyard that. I don't know, they feel like it blocks their view of the lake or something like that. And they cut it down without. Fill in all an application, getting staff to come by and check it out. Uh, and they, you know, they just don't get permission. And they, they cut it down. Then later we find out that they have cut this tree down. So we approach them and say, hey, we, we discovered you cut down a protected tree. Uh, we don't know what size it is, so we're, we're going to evaluate this at thirty-six inches. At that point. At that point, are they, does this ordinance require them to replace 36 inches of trees? Or, you know?
Or it's unfeasible. Yes, sir.
Unless it's unfeasible, so the same standards, they will be held accountable to those same standards?
Right.
Okay. And actually, unless they plant three inch trees or larger, it's a two to one. So according to the ordinance, they would have to plant 72 inches worth of tree to cover, to make up for that 136.
Which is unfeasible.
Yeah.
They, they will be encouraged to follow the rules. And, and there to be much more serious consequences. And that, I mean, we had too many examples. And, and the committee knew of them that where this was going on. You know, the idea was we need to stop it.
And, excuse me, this can also be, because I noticed on the app, there's a thing where people aren't following the rules and you could put in your little two cents and then somebody will follow up on it. So this would fall under that, correct? Like, let's say I'm across.
You send me a picture of that tree. I'll use that, yes.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else from council have any further questions, comments? All right. Does anybody object to closing the public hearing at this time? Because this is the first reading. All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:37 PM. And at this time, it's open for action. Yes, Frank.
I move that we approve ordinance 20-06-04-01.
Uh, sorry, I didn't know who seconded it.
No, Dick.
All right. So I have the motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, place one, Dave Williams.
Hi.
Place two, Don.
Hi.
Place three is Arch.
Hi.
Place four is Tim.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, Tim wasn't, I mean, I'm sorry, Dave. Place five, Weatherly, did you say hi?
Hi.
And place six, Frank.
Nice work, Roy. Good work, subcommittee. Hi.
And I also vote aye. So the ordinance is adopted unanimous. All right, we move on to agenda item number five. This is an action item. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding ordinance number 20-06-04-02, an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending chapter 13, utilities, articles 13 dot 1100, domestic water drought contingency plan and 13 dot 500 reuse drought contingency plan, sections 13 dot 1105 initiation restriction and termination of drought response stages and 13 dot 505 initiation restrictions and termination of drought response stages and chapter one general provisions, article 1 dot 1900 golf courses, section 1 dot 1933 initiation and termination of response to stages to allow the city manager to initiate and terminate drought response stages, providing an effective date repealer, severability, proper notice and open meetings clause. City council discussed this item at the 21 May, 2020 council meeting. At that meeting, it is understood that council Davila requested to make changes to the domestic water drought contingency plan and reuse drought contingency plan, requesting the following amendments. Section 1 dot 1922, change the decision making entity from the city council to the city manager. Section 13 dot 1105, change the responsibility for the initiation and termination of the four supply triggers from city council to city manager. And section 13 dot 1505, change the responsibility for the initiation and termination of the four supply triggers from the city council to the city manager. And as I understand it, on advice from legal, that the subject of this ordinance for consideration tonight is limited to who has the authority to initiate the response triggers. And then if at some point we are actually wanting to take action or discuss the actual contingency plans, that'll have to be put on, on the agenda at a different time. So we're, we're really looking at only the three decision making.
Hello, everybody. I am still, I, I'm still listening. I'm still on a, a city council meeting. I'm trying to keep it low. It went a little longer than I thought.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who that is in the background addressing your neighbor.
I'm on a virtual city council call right now. A client is fine.
Caller one needs to mute.
That's our financial advisor.
Everybody, if you're not talking.
Sorry, I don't have the ability to mute him, so.
Dave will need to mute caller number one.
And who is to come?
That's Tom Lawrence, our financial advisor.
Okay. All right, it looks like we've got the, the go ahead. So questions, comments from council? Yes, Frank.
I think I made the suggestion that the city manager initiate.
Okay.
Two.
I'm just re, I'm just reading the notes, so I wasn't here last BD.
I realize that, Mayor, but anyway, kind of like we may correct that. Secondly, and, and y'all have probably seen my email, it's fairly long, but the only issue that I'd like to address is there's some typos in the ordinance. How do we, and, and we, we haven't got a corrected set of ordinances. So if somebody makes a motion to prove this, we're going to have to address the typos, correct?
Aaron, you're not on.
Sorry about that. I, I've already looked through to identify all the typos to make those corrections. So I've preemptively done that. I haven't, I didn't distribute the new document because I didn't know if you were going to make some additional changes. I did notice that there were other sections where the council is the acting body. And if you wanted to make sure that those sections were added in, I can make sure that that happens. As long as you're clear in your direction, I'll make the corresponding changes and then it'll be ready for signature.
Okay. So the, the typos, those type of things, that doesn't have to come, does that have to be put on the agenda and looked at, or we can just sign the typos?
No, I, I can, I could. I think I can, it's going to be a complicated motion, but I think I could make the motion to fix the typos and add the three provisions that are not in this ordinance. But I'll make a motion to add those three other places. I think I can do that. We'll, we'll see. We'll get to that.
All right, great. Yes, Don.
I'd like to just make a couple of points on this one. I appreciate the, the work Arch has done on this, but I'd like to reference back to the discussion with the former councilman Ron Smith put years into this water and drought plan. He had good reasoning behind it. And some of the questions he brought up about what we were trying to achieve with this change were, in, in my opinion, very valid. And therefore, my, my first point is I would like to see this discussed with, with more availability for community input. We have a lot of history in this town and even our current city manager wasn't here for the last really bad drought. And I, I think to give the responsibility to that one person, especially considering how many city managers we've been through over the years, we would, we'd be making a mistake. I think an elected official that's held accountable and has more history in the town is the, the proper decision-making body for things of this nature that require a little more history. With that said, I, I think we could postpone this and, and bring it up at the first live meeting where we may have more public input and, and, and have more people able to tune in because not everyone, including me, enjoys these online meetings. That's all I have.
All right. So Don, I've got the trigger points, you know, that the city manager or city council would use to make the changes to our plan. Those are set by LCRA. Those are not trigger points that council or a city manager could make. So whether it's, my question is, does it, does it make a difference if, because we don't set the trigger points? You know, else it, when we hit that trigger point, LCRA is going to come down and say, hey, you have to move to, you know, this, this level. I'm just wondering if that, I, I wonder if that makes a difference.
That's where my point is. I, I think it is something that is worthy of having an, an open meeting with, not that this was not open, but a meeting with public attendant seems to better be a, a better discussion for that. I think we're trying to pick something in, in a strange world that is not necessarily broken right now.
Okay. Yes, Arch.
Ed, you made the point that the trigger points are set by LCRA or they figured out when, when we go to these different stages of water conservation. Who would be the person that LCRA would contact to make sure that we take the proper action according to those trigger points? Would that not be the city manager?
Yes, I, I too, I would assume it to be, but I, without looking through it and seeing if it's designated somewhere in that, in the plan, that's who I would assume it would be. But I'd have to, to look that up.
So, so my question, I'm sorry. So my question then would be, why wouldn't he be the one who should be authorized to make the announcement and, and get the, the wheels rolling in the proper direction to make the changes to the status of our water conservation plan?
Yeah, and that's, well, and I, to kind of follow up on that, I'm kind of wondering if, you know, if we hit that trigger point and LCRA, is, is there a lag time? I mean, if, if LCRA comes and says, hey, we've dropped to such and such acre footage, your city now must go into stage three water restrictions. Does that mean immediately? Or is there a lag time where we wait until city council, let's say it comes in on a Friday and we don't have, right after we had a council meeting, we don't have another council meeting scheduled for two weeks. Do we have, can we delay taking action on that for two weeks until city council? Or, you know, do we have to take action right there? And then it's kind of null and void if LCRA is demanding, we have to take action at, at that time. So did you have something, Josh?
Mayor, I was just going to confirm that the contact, the way we have it set now is the city engineer and the city manager so that we have the notification. And then the process is LCRA sends us the monitoring levels so that we're aware and hopefully nothing drastically would happen within a 48 hour to 72 hour without a notice. So then we would come back to council, but the process you laid out is exactly how it works now.
Frank, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I, I just agree with Mayor, the points you made. We, we don't have a choice. We lose some time. We lose some opportunities to advise the public. And, and if we don't have a choice, the council doesn't need to see it.
I'd like to be in the loop so that we get a push announcement that this has occurred.
Yeah, well, well, and like, like Josh pointed out, I get LCR reports every single day. I know the acre footage of every lake and, and they have Buchanan on there. So it's a combined, I believe it's a combined average between Lake Buchanan and Lake Travis. So if, if we're getting close to that trigger point, you know, we, we should be able to have time to, you know, even as a council, tell, tell the, tell the citizens that, hey, we're getting close to this and we're expecting within the next two weeks, barring any rain or anything that, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna enter into stage three. And I don't know, as a, as a council in one of our meetings, it's possible we could say, hey, once we reach that point, you know, we authorize the city manager at that time to, you know, instead of giving him automatic control. But either, either way, I, I think it will work, but I, I just know we don't control the trigger point, so. Yes, Dick.
Yeah, the, the main thing is with this, that we set our plan up, our water conservation, our wastewater conservation plans, we set those up with the triggers that are going to make everything happen. It's already set in the ordinance. It's when we hit that point, we go to that stage. Now, whether it's us or whether it's the city manager, really it doesn't make any difference. When you hit that acreage, that's going to engage, LCRA is going to push it. It's going to have to happen. The nice thing is the lake may come up very suddenly. In flood conditions, the lake can rise very rapidly. But fortunately, it doesn't go down very rapidly. We're going to have time in advance to know that these trigger points are coming and that we're getting close. It's not going to be a thing where this week, we're going to be in great shape and next week we're going to be at stage two, isn't going to happen. And it will be a thing of being fine, being stage one, then moving on down to stage two and then on down to stage three. So whether the council does it, whether Josh does it, whether we make it the responsibility of the city engineer, doesn't really make any difference. We just need to have it set up so that when we hit those trigger levels, it's done.
All right. Yes, Arch.
Mayor, we're talking about the initiation of these different trigger points. We've not considered terminating the trigger points. I think we need to look at both sides of the equation here. And I don't really see any reason why the reliance has to be on city council when it could just as easily be assigned to our city manager.
Well, then that is, that is a good point. Let's say, you know, September, October, let's say we get a hurricane Harvey in September, dumps 20 something inches of rain in Marble Falls and, and Lake Travis fills up. And now LCRA comes down and says, hey, we've got enough acreage foot, you can drop back down to stage one or stage two, wherever the lowest level is. Do we have to wait till we have a city council meeting to tell people, hey, we're now back down, we've gone down to stage one and you can water more frequently? Or, you know, do we want to make it so that the city manager? Or, you know, do we want to make it so that the city manager makes that call and it, and it happens, you know, as, in accordance to L C R A's directions? So that's, that's a good point. You know, going into restrictions, we might could, you know, we're, we could be ahead of the ballgame. And it's great to have city council oversight. But coming out of it, it may cause a delay. So if we wait for city council. It kind of works both ways.
Mayor, if I may.
Don't say anybody else?
Arch.
If there's no, if there's nobody else from council that wants to make, did you have something else to say, Arch?
Yeah, I forgot what I was going to say now.
Oh, sorry.
Just kidding. No. First of all, this was Councilman Robbins's idea, and it was not mine. He, I was on a different level. I was talking about something entirely different. But I fully agree with Councilmember Robbins in that we should turn this over to our city manager. Just let him make the, the determination as to when to initiate the different levels of water conservation, or to make the determination to terminate them. That's my two cents.
Okay. And yes, and I'm sorry, because I was reading off the staff summary and it had your name listed. So, but yes, the recommendations all are come from Counselor Robbins. All right. Anybody else from council? All right. Is there anybody, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this topic?
Say, Ed?
Yes, Ron.
It's Ron Smith. Just, just a brief background on it. The reason why city council was put on there was because for, from 2010 until I believe 2017 or 18, when we passed that revised one, we went through six city managers and a couple of assistant city managers. And the city manager was the most unstable position we had for most of my time on the council. We didn't even have public works directors during some of that period. And so I was kind of acting as a lead, if you will, and the language just remained the same. If you wish to change it to the city manager, that's fine. For all those plans, just understand the rationale for where that came from. I just thought that city council should, should own the restrictions because they're the ones that's probably going to field the phone calls when you apply them.
Right.
That's all.
Yeah, I, I mean, I like, I like that. I like, I like the idea that, you know, with, with it being in council's hands, your council's definitely going to be way more stable as far as the members being there. And y'all bring up great points. Excuse me.
Keep smiling.
Yeah, we, you're right. We may not know who our city manager is at the, at any given point in time. So as far as stability, I definitely agree with that. Arch?
I'm going to make the presentation, or I'm going to present the idea that he will outlast us.
Well, our current city manager probably did.
That's what I'm talking about.
Just one other thing. There's probably a water release taking place right out to go downstream to the rice farmers. That's generally about 200,000 acre feet. That translates to about a foot a week. So even under drought conditions, the lakes don't move down that fast, except during water releases. You're probably in one right now.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. So it's probably going to take most of the summer to drain off 10 feet. So, you know, this is not, this is something that doesn't happen very fast. It's kind of like a slow-moving train.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at it just yesterday. Buchanan is like 97% full and, or 90 something. And Lake Travis was in, close to 90. I think combined, we were at 91% capacity right now. So we're definitely not in any drought conditions right now as far as storage. Anybody else from the audience? Yes, Dorsey.
Does Josh want to do this? I mean, let's ask Josh. Does he want to take this on? Or does he want to leave it to the city's council?
Josh, I ask you a question.
Mayor, if, if you're asking that one, I think it's great to have staff be able to initiate with the parameters, the triggers that are in the document. Yes, sir.
See?
Unless fired. And then, no, that wouldn't be a good idea.
That's a kind of a funny thing, Dorsey. Staff pretty much goes with what we tell them. So.
I know. I have to say though, that isn't it easier to deflect, you know, that this isn't on Josh's shoulders, that it becomes on your, all your shoulders. And, you know, when everybody's calling, complaining that they can't water their lawn, now they can look at the city council instead of bashing Josh.
Well, you could always pass the buck, you know. Josh can always, Josh can always say, well, I'm doing as I was directed by city council. And if you call the city council member, it's easy for a council member to go, hey, L C R A set the rules. We're only doing what L C R A made it. So then they got to call L C R A and complain. So you can pass the buck, you know, several times down the line if you want to.
If, yeah, if you want to pass the buck, which hopefully none of you do.
I think it's incumbent that the city manager takes direction from the council regardless.
Frank, do you have a comment?
Yeah, the council owns this. Period. End of message. Because it's our ordinance. Let me say it again. This council doesn't have a choice about what we do. That's spelled out in the ordinance. Three, the city council is going to oversee the guy that's going to direct the work, and that's the city manager, to do all of the things. And I won't go through the list of things that he will be overseeing to advise folks about what we have to do. So the burden on him doesn't change a bit. He's still got to get her done, which is to advise everybody about what the rules are when it changes.
Yes.
The other thing is, if he does something we don't like, we can fire him, or we can tell him not to do that. You know, this is, if he has the authority to institute the steps that are already set up and directed by L C R A, and all it is is simply saying, L C R A says we're now stage two, and putting that out to the public. It's not a decision that he's got to decide, well, do we want to go to stage two? Or do we want to stay in stage one? L C R A is going to come down and say, you are now stage two. And his obligation is going to be to notify the public that that's where we are. It's not a thing where he's going to have to sit around and mullet and think about it. He's just.
Right. And, and, and because L C R A does set these trigger points, it's not like, it's not like council or, well, I don't know. I, I guess, if we changed our entire contingency plan and got it approved by L C R A, we could set different trigger points. But, you know, that's, our plan has to be approved by L C R A. And I don't even know that, you know, I seriously doubt that they would approve something that's not in line with their trigger points. So, you know, whether it's Josh or council, you know, we can't say, well, we're, we're going to go into stage three, even though L C R A says we're at stage two. So, yeah. Yes, Frank.
We've already done that, Mayor. Our ordinance is more strict, and that this is going to be what we may look at later. But the fact is, our ordinance is more strict. The trigger is more strict than L C R A. And they're okay with that.
Yeah, we got it approved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, Arch.
Still want to make a point that we're talking about the triggers to go into tougher water restrictions. But how about the termination of what's already there? Because that is really the essence of what started me down this road is the termination of different water restrictions stages.
Mayor, the terminations are covered in the current ordinance.
Yeah, but it's, it's also based on city council decision, correct?
It's based upon the acre feet.
Well, right. Yeah, I know. I know it's based off the trigger points, but I'm, I'm thinking our ordinance says council.
Trust me, it's in there. It's just, when you go down, it's the same trigger points when it comes back up. That's all.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else? Not where it is an action item. Yes, Arch. Yes, there he is.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we, ordinance. Yes. I move to adopt ordinance 20-06-04-02.
Second it.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. And I believe Frank has some comments, probably about the typos.
Yeah, I'd like to see if the maker of the motion, the seconder, would agree with these amendments, that we approve the ordinance with the following amendments, that where the ordinance says 13,500, it's a 13,1500, 13.1500. Where the ordinance says 13.505, it's a 13.1505. Second amendment, that in section 13.1500, there are four places where the council is now listed as initiating. All four of those places should state city manager. The current ordinance has one, and there are three others that need to be added. And then finally, where the ordinance says 13.15051, period, it should be 13,1505 parentheses A. And where it says 13.1505, 1, 2, and 3, it ought to be 13.1505 parentheses 1, 2, and 3. Did I, did I get those, Irwin? Okay, thanks.
All right. Are you good with that, Arch?
Yes, I am.
All right. So I have the motion. Is the person who's second, is, are they in agreement?
Yes, I'm good with that.
All right. I have my motion and my second. Is there any further comments? All right. Place one, Dave Williams.
Aye.
Place two, Don Barthol.
Aye.
Place three, Arch. Place four is Tim.
Aye.
Place five.
Yes.
Aye.
Place seven, Frank Robbins. I mean, place six.
Aye.
Can't count. And myself, I, and the motion carries unanimous. All right. Now we go to number six. Okay, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding an application to the city council for a variance in the maximum size of a government sign at the location of the existing bulletin boards under the canopy and adjacent to the fuel tank at the Lago Vista Rusty Allen Airport. This has been noted, this went to the advisory board, the airport advisory board, and has been come down. However, after further review, it has been noted that in our ordinances, the definition of an official sign is any sign or signs of a duly constituted governmental body, including traffic or similar regulatory devices, legal notices, or other instructional informative or regulatory signs having to do with health, hazard, parking, traffic, swimming, dumping, or for public information, et cetera. That definition applies to this sign. And so therefore, the variance is not needed. And so I am pulling agenda item number six off of the agenda. And we will go to number seven. Number seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action on resolution number 20-1837, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, accepting by special warranty deed, 7.7241 acres of property donated by Hines Lake, Hines Lake Travis Land Two Limited Partnership, dedicating the property as parkland and authorizing execution of special warranty deed. Okay. This is pretty much an administrative action. The special warranty deed, Lago Vista Subdivision Regulation, Section 5.10 requires the developer for each residential subdivision in the city or the city's ETJ to set aside and dedicate public parkland or make an in lieu financial contribution to the city at the minimum rate of one acre for every 30 new dwelling units, or $1,050 per dwelling unit. The developer for Tassera is dedicating the 7.7241 acres at the intersection of Pace Ravine Drive, Tassera Parkway, and Cape Travis Bend as parkland. And the park, this is the area that contains the swimming pool and associated facilities for that subdivision. Questions? Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Part of this acceptance of the warranty deed on this, does the park area become our responsibility for maintenance?
Yes. Yes, Frank.
P O A is doing the maintenance, I believe.
I'm sorry?
I think the P O A is doing the maintenance.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted that clarified. But the park does become open public park?
Dedicated parkland is the, is the, will be the designation.
And that was.
Not a city park. It doesn't become a city park. It's still, right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I misunderstood then too, because I thought this, I thought this would bring it under the fold of our Parks and Recreation Department. I thought this would bring it under the fold of our Parks and Recreation Department.
Good.
I stand, I, thank you, because I misunderstood. Yes, Frank.
This, this is, this goes back, and Erwin can correct me about where, why we're doing this now, but this goes back to the development agreement and the Public Improvement District, dah dah dah, when Tassara came in. They, they got a bearing to the parkland and they had to dedicate because they gave Orphe and Lua because they gave us land and particularly the swimming pool. And I think the reason that we're doing this now, I mean, this was dedicated on a plat. The reason we're doing it now is because I think we want deeds for all of the property that we get through the subdivision system rather than simply dedication on a plat. Hard to find if you just put it on dedication on a plat.
Correct?
Yeah, it, it makes it easier to find in the deed records. And, and it, it makes it clearer as to what the particular use for that property is. And I believe, uh, Tom Lawrence, well, maybe he's not on the phone anymore, or was he muted earlier? Because, um.
I'm, I'm on.
Okay.
And we have Darlene on, on as well, so.
That's right.
Yep. This does go back. Yeah, it goes back to the 2012 financings. And Darlene, you're probably better able to explain it, but it, it, it's in line with the documentation, the S A P, the, uh, and, and the document, the financing agreement from 2012. As we prepare, by the way, and we are, as you probably are aware, working on the refinancing of all of the 2012 debt. Putting the M I A and the I A number one.
Right, and this is, this is Darlene. Um, I will add to that just a little bit that um, our, our documents require that, um, the ownership of the, the parkland, you know, that the deed be in the city's name. So that's why we're taking care of that now, but all of the maintenance and the costs, that's all still being, um, uh, paid for by the, um, the H O A. And it's still in use by the H O A. It's not a public park, like Aaron said, because we have a, a pool operating agreement with the city. And so we will continue operating, um, under that agreement.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, is there anybody from the audience who would like to make a question, comment? All right, it is open for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 20-18-30, 1837.
I second.
Think I heard Tim on that, so we got.
Yeah.
Dave Williams made the motion, Tim got the second. Uh, any further discussion? All right, place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
And place six.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the motion carries unanimous. And we go into number eight. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a recommendation by the Dawn Point Committee for artwork and landscaping at Dawn Point. Okay. So as we know, city council has previously approved funds for the reconstruction of Dawn Point. Uh, the funds that were appropriated and set aside for this are $25,000. Uh, K L V B requested a committee to develop a plan for what Dawn Point will look like moving forward. Evidently, the brick monolith is no longer, uh, pretty to anybody in the city. Uh, so the committee consisted of councillor Frank Robbins, Parks and Rec Director Chris Mobley, K L V B members Dan Sellers and Karen Gass, local artist Paul Prince, Cindy Debold. And I'd like to thank all of those members at this time. The committee met five different times to discuss the designs and determine the quality art scape that would create a sense of community pride in Lago. Committee met with local artist Mark J. Anseer, I believe is how you pronounce his name, of Iron Waves. If you've driven through Jonestown and you've seen on the, um, northern side of the road, you've seen the Iron Waves Art Studio. Mark developed a design concept for the committee, and we have included it in the agenda packet. Committee voted six, unanimous, six to zero to hire Mark to construct his new work of art. It is made out of aluminum and will include a lighting and water feature. Uh, if you look at the concept drawings, in the center of the artwork, there will be the words Lago Vista. The artist explains that at night, with the light features and the water features, that the Lago Vista will be highlighted at night. He does say it can be completed with or without the Lago Vista Center. And then he has provided his estimate for the piece. Uh, if we approve this project, we will also need a motion to allow the city manager to negotiate and enter into the contract with Mark Anseer for the project. And Don, um, Don, Josh has, um, put up the pictures of the artwork. So questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, the, the lighting on this is within our dark sky ordinances?
Yes, it will have to be.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, one of the things that, the fun part about this and with this committee, this committee went through those meetings, had the dialogue, found some, uh, some projects that they liked. And then, uh, they brought in the local artist. He put together his own design after listening to the committee. And then he came up with this, uh, this piece. And, uh, you know, it really took us by surprise. It's, it's an awesome concept. Uh, I think when it, when it comes to fruition with the water and then the lighting that's controlled, um, you know, downward facing lighting, um, and some different potential other lighting options, it'll be something that at the end of Dawn Point will be, uh, something fantastic.
Personally, I think we need to make sure it has the Lago Vista in the center of it so that at night it's, it's highlighted.
Mayor, one of the fun things that the artist told us, um, is what he'll do is he'll work on, obviously he'll work on the, the main sculpture first. And then at the end, one of the final pieces is we'll look at the Lago Vista in the center and make sure that it adds to the overall aesthetic of the, of the piece of art. And so that's kind of fun. You know, theoretically, we go in there and we look at the project and the waves and the way the water's splashing and, and the Lago Vista works. Or if it doesn't work, that's a removable piece. And so he was pretty confident that, um, he liked the idea, but he said if, if we look at it and we decide that it takes away from the, uh, majesty of it, then it can be morphed or changed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We have an estimate on the cost of this piece of art?
Yes, Mayor, uh, we're about half the total cost of what's been appropriated.
Now, I'm looking, I didn't, I didn't see the actual number in the packet anywhere.
Mayor, once we, um, the estimate was there, um, and once we get the final contract together to commission him, then we'll get that number completed and get it back over. But it's well below the budgeted amount.
And what's, what's the height, what's the dimension on this?
This, uh, these columns are 10 to 12 feet tall.
So if we look at the picture on page 115 of the artwork he did called The Rooster Tale, I would, I would say that, that is about 10 to 12 feet tall.
The Rooster Tale, Mayor, is, I believe these are 13 feet in length.
Yeah.
And The Rooster Tale is actually at, uh, the Hollows Marina, correct? All right, any more questions, comments from council? All right, is there anybody? I'm sorry?
Have, have we looked at, I, I see Lago Vista where Lago's at the bottom. Did we look at the wording the other way where Lago's at the top and Vista's the second word instead of the first word that you see?
Mayor, we haven't. Uh, one of the things that, uh, that the artist said was once the, once he gets the places up, then we'll go back and look at it to see how it's, how it's best read or how it's best located.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Frank, did you have something?
Yes, sir, I, two things, but I'd like to make a motion. Can I, can I ask your question or can I ask your question and make a motion?
Uh, I would prefer if you asked the question first and then, because I have not taken any comments from the audience yet, so.
Can we pay for this with hot tax?
Mayor, we do have the, uh, an email out right now to see if, because it's local art, if we can use hot tax dollars. And if it is something, uh, that we are permitted to and we get the permission from, uh, state office, then we'll bring that back to the council to say, do we want to appropriate those dollars over to it?
Yes, it would be nice. And I think that was our initial intent, was to try to use the, the hot dollars for this.
That is correct.
All right, anybody from the audience, questions, comments? Yes, Darcy.
I, uh, Darcy DeVoe, I just had a couple of questions. So one, can they bring something out so we can see what the reflection from the sun is going to do at that cross point on Lago Vista? So we're not like putting something up that's going to blind drivers on Loman Ford and on Dawn Drive? Because, you know, stainless steel has a reflective cover. I mean, art's beautiful. And then also going about what we just said about L C R A, is what happens when we have a water restriction? And does that like cut the water restriction and so there's no water flowing in there? Because like, if you look downtown Austin, none of the water fountains are, have water in them. They've completely cut them out. And, uh, you know, that's, that's a factor. So what will this look like with no water? And also, maybe are the lights changeable? So at the Fourth of July, we can have red, white, and blue. Maybe if there was some, uh, you know, something going on, can the lights change and be like on an adapter like a hot tub or something is? And then also, uh, the height of that, is that area good to take that much height? And that's all I have to say.
Well, I know, I know the area's tall enough because we've got that giant brick monolith with the sailboat on top of it now that's probably 30 feet tall. The lighting, I'm, I'm sure it's not difficult to adjust the lighting. There'll probably be L E D type lights. Sorry, I got a light buzzing me. So I'm sure the lights are no problem. The water, yes, definitely, if we're in a, depending on our restrictions, yes, it's quite possible that there would, the water would be turned off to the fountain. I'm hoping that we have designed it in such that, um, it's still is just as attractive without the water as it would be with the water.
Right.
And the, the point about the sun reflecting of it, that's a good point. I don't know if that was considered or not.
Mayor, it is, uh, it's an aluminum structure and it was considered. And one of the things is, that's part of the artistic beauty of it is to shape it. Don't have the impacts.
You have to be seen on a camera. Yeah, all right.
Denise, your microphone's on.
Okay, I wasn't sure if, if you could do it. Just so everybody is clear on the sides of this, the committee and I went out there and I actually took pictures. And we used glee as an example. And we got in front of the original sign that's up here at the corner. And that is how we came to the conclusion of the height of glee or the, I shouldn't say we, the committee did, because we held it up and down and to see the height. And that's, if you go short, you're not going to see it. Uh, so to answer you the question of that, if you guys, anybody wants to see the pictures, go to K L V B and my email address is there. Contact me and I'll be glad to send them to you.
Okay, so glee, that's the artwork that's going to go in the area here by City Hall, if anybody doesn't know what she's referring to when she says glee. Uh, so that being an aluminum structure as well. Was there an issue with, uh, light at all, were we aware of?
I don't remember.
Yeah, not this time. You know, part of that is to bring one of those pieces out and be able to move it around to see how the light's going to reflect uh, off of the side. The aluminum apparently is better for less reflective, I don't know, uh, properties than the steel. And then the way that he's going to handle the sides of the, uh, of the work, it'll be, uh, you saw the lines on it, whatever that's called. He does something for it. It has, uh, fantastic color features. And then you're right on the lights, Mayor, the, the lights will be programmable L E D lights.
Yeah, because I know that.
If Darcy, if Darcy wants to see some of his work, Josh, because I'm not in here. Well, he's got pieces very similar to the technique that's going to be used out there that you could go and look at.
Right, I, I've been to his studio.
He'd probably take a piece of metal out there and show you how it reflects or not. So, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, because the point does always pretty much do ease, so sunrise, that is something we do, we do need to make sure it's, it's not reflecting. Yes, Arch?
I have a question about the height. Um, I heard 10 to 12 feet. How, how was it determined that that was a good height?
Mayor, I'll go back to what Denise was saying. So glee, the glee structure that was created by Cindy Debold is approximately seven feet tall. So we took glee out there and we stood glee up on the, on the current existing signage, which has a foot and a half base. Um, and we also stood Chris Mobley out next to glee and Denise to give you different varying heights to look at as points of reference. Those are the pictures Denise is talking about. Um, and so after Dan Sellers did some measurements on the existing structure, um, and we did measurements with, with glee, uh, it's determined that in order to see the magnitude of the structure in that area, that the 12 feet was going to be the, the height that you're going to want on that point, so it's not too small. And then the diameter of the footprint is something that you want to be able to have uh, sufficient space between the three, what I would call pillars or columns, so that they work in the way that the artist works. The reason I say 10 to 12 feet is due to, um, once we commission the project, he will build the project and it's not going to be something that you build to spec, because it's a piece of art. It's not something that we're going to go and cut out of a plasma cutter. And so the pieces are 12 feet in length. And so he might have to bring them down slightly to create the four sides. And so he might have to bring them down slightly to create the four sides of each of those pillars. Remember, I have no artistic ability, Arch, so I'm only telling you what he explained to me.
I, I share your, your inability to, to do anything artistic. I have one further question though. Was it ever discussed to have the structure be a little taller than 12 feet? Because, you know, when you look at what's there now, it's, it's quite a bit taller than that.
Mayor, the two great points. And to start, the, the first concern with the existing column with the sailboat on top was that that's incredibly way too tall. People can't see it. It's not in the line of, of sight. And you want something that's going to capture your normal vision and not take your vision off of your normal travel line. And, and we discussed that. The second part, what I was going back to, the integrity of those pieces, uh, it has to be stable. And so if we're going larger pieces of aluminum, then the artist said that would, could potentially reduce the integrity. And then the way we mount it is also going to matter. So that was his recommendation. We had started original discussion. The committee said, hey, what about eight feet? And then the committee goes out there and, and nine, 10 came up. And actually, I think at one point Frank made the motion that it goes 10 or above. And that's when the artist came in and came in on the idea of, of 10 to 12 feet being the correct height for that area.
Yes, Darcy.
Thank you.
Hey, now that everybody's been talking, I've just had a couple of other questions. Do we have an art drawing or something that shows where the placement of this is? And how far off the road is it? And is it like centered in the middle of that island? Because I, you know, it's up the street for me. So every day I drive by it. Is, is it like centered by the trees? Or is it, is it like out to the point or, or, you know, like where are they actually placing this art?
It's going to be, it's going to be towards the point. Um, I was looking to see if we actually had the layout in our packet.
I didn't see it.
Mayor, you don't have the layout again in your packet. We had the layout before. The, the one reason you don't have it is, um, once the art, once we commission, then we'll get the final specs for the radius of the bottom of the piece of work. And going back to another question that we asked about recirculating of water, the recirculation system, obviously you'll have evaporation and you'll have splash where you're losing some water. So it'll have an automatic refill, kind of like a, like a sump pump or a lever. But we're recirculating all that water with the pump to process it through. So you will have that. So when we get the final specs, Dan Sellers created that entire layout for the landscaping that was presented to council originally. And then we'll, we'll morph the foliage and the plants around the new size of the artwork. And that's something that Dan will have. It'll, it'll give us that update.
Yeah. And I know it'll be, you know, it's going to be towards the point, but it's not going to be out on the point because anybody pulling up to that light will need to be able to see traffic to their left. So it'll be set back far enough as to not block anybody's view that's on Dawn Drive wanting to turn onto Loman.
And also I was going to say, you know, if you've got a wreck on that corner or whatever, you don't want it so far out that someone now has smashed into it because now it becomes a city thing. Like someone could sue the city for hitting your art piece, you know? So, so you've kind of got to be careful of how far back that sits to allow different things and lights and all that stuff. So I, you know, the piece is beautiful. Don't get me wrong. I, I just, I just worry that if it's not set back far enough or that it's got shrubs around it or something like that, that, you know, any of the splash water doesn't end up on the roadway or, you know, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? If not, it's open for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we allow the city manager to negotiate and enter to, enter into a contract with Mark. How you pronounce that for the Dawn Point project?
Are we approving this, this actual project or are we just?
Yes, motion that we allow the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with Mark for the artwork.
Okay. I just want to make sure we were clear that we were approving this actual piece and and authorizing the city manager. All right. So I got the motion. Who's my second?
Second, Tim.
Tim, okay. Uh, any further discussion? All right, place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The artwork is approved. Unanimous. All right. And we go to consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have number nine, approval of the May 7th, 2020 city council meetings. Approval of a request for damage reimbursement for Robert Peyton or by Robert Peyton. Approval of resolution number 20-1844. Resolution by the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, authorizing the submission application for an acceptance of the payment of funds for the federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security act grant. Congress approved for disbursement to state and local governments and authorizing the city manager to execute documents, take actions to facilitate such acceptance. 12, approval of resolution number 20-1845. A resolution of the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, approving funding of the capital area council of governments of CapCog for fiscal year 2021 air quality program. And I will note at this point that, uh, item number 11, which is the CARES Act grant is being pulled from the consent agenda because the Travis County, uh, they have approved a certain level of funding, but they have not completed the interlocal agreement. And therefore there is really nothing for us to consider at this point. So we are only looking at items nine, 10 and 12. Questions? Comments?
Can you move to accept?
If I have no questions, comments, anybody from the audience? Nope. All right. It's open for action.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda items as written. Section 11. I'll second.
All right. So I have, did you get that Sandra? I have a motion and a second. I was confused on actually who did it, but.
Tim.
Tim, okay.
He made the motion and Dick made the second.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions, comments? All right, place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Hello, I'm sorry. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Consent agenda is approved. All right, we move into future meetings.
Are we going to discuss getting back together in open meetings?
So I've got, well, I was looking because, um, Josh and I were, um, speaking in the office prior to the council meeting about, uh, uh, city managers' reports. But it is not on the agenda. So I guess we will not be doing a city manager's report. So we will go future meetings. Number 13, consider our schedule and items for future council meetings. So two of the things that I have made notes on. Get my paperwork here. Only have six stacks of paperwork. All right. So obviously, uh, we've got a, we need to come up within our budget schedule. We had our first initial directional meeting yesterday. But over the next few months, uh, we need to hash out when we were, we're going to have our budget hearings, meetings, not hearings, but budget discussion meetings. Especially when we get to the latter power to July, August, first half of September, you know, once we start getting our hard numbers. And, um, so that's when we want to have our open meetings, you know, with, with the audience participation and everything. I know in the meantime, we're going to have, um, meetings on individual basis with staff to discuss budget items, but we need to come up with a schedule. For the June 18th, I've tentatively got that CARES Act grant penciled in. Travis County has said that they were going to review the final interlocal agreement at their June 9th meeting and get it to us. So hopefully between June 9th and June 18th, we can review the interlocal agreement. We will have our program set, ready to submit to Travis County so that we can get that, that grant money. And then the last thing I have on here is our July 2nd meeting. Uh, I just want to know in advance if anybody has, I know we've still got, we may still have restrictions on travel. I, I really don't know if, you know, if we're going to have any restrictions on travel right now. And I just want to know if, if everybody's going to be in town for the July 2nd council meeting or if anybody's going out of town, if we're going to have a quorum or. No.
I'll be in town.
I'm in town.
I may be out. I don't know yet.
All right, yeah. And I'll be around. So it looks like we have at least six. So I say we just continue with the July 2nd meeting. I know we've got July 4th and it's on a Saturday this year, so. Firework should be really good this year, so. All right, anybody else have stuff for the future?
Mr. Mayor, we had discussion of when we figured to meet in person.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. And I did have that note, but I forgot it. So, I don't know. Uh, I think reading phase three, it looks like restaurants can go to tables of 10 now. And they're allowed to go an additional 25% on their seating. So, you know, I guess in theory, we could, we could start having our meetings in person again. Uh, we would just have to make sure we don't look at, we'd have to look at our occupancy card and make sure we don't go over 50%. And I, I need to read the governor's phase three thing again. On the 12th, some things are going to 75%. So we get to June 18th, we could potentially have between 50 and 75% available space. So.
That's usually all we need.
Usually. So. I mean, this, this has been a pretty, this has been a pretty good experiment, experience. And we have had some audience participation, but I do think, I do think the in-person council meetings are more conducive for citizen participation. And I'm tired of having to go place one, place two, place three.
I think we can probably make that decision when you post the meeting, right? Decide whether it's going to be live or memorex.
Yeah.
See where we are in two weeks.
Anybody that's in the audience that's going to be sitting out there? What is your thoughts on, on meeting face to face again? Darcy?
I actually miss you guys. Don't ask me why. But, but this has been great because you could actually log on from wherever you are, which is really nice. But the in, in session meetings when we're at City Hall also I think has more, I don't know, you just feel like you're part of something and where this could be anywhere. But it, both ways are nice. But, but yes, I think having them back at City Hall would be great.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Question.
Yes.
When we, when we, the decision on opening up council meetings, are we also making the decision when City Hall opens up to the, to the public?
Um, we need to. Yeah, um, that's one of those trigger, trigger things right now. I have not reviewed our triggers in the last couple of days to see where we're at, whether we can scale down and open it up. Because I do know we have other things like the library. Um, our pool is opening up soon. I think that's a trigger thing and I've, and I've, I'd have to again, look at our declaration too, to see if, if we can just automatically. I think we can make those decisions based off of, uh, the declaration.
And Mayor, so you hit on the swimming pool opens on June 20th. The library is working to open potentially next week, but, um, if not next week, then by the week of the 15th. So that would be the same week as the pool. We are working with local contractor to install the protective glass over at Development Services. Hopefully we'll have that completed within the next two weeks. Once we have that installed, Mayor, it should be a lot easier for us to open up our offices on our side so that we have protection in the areas.
Good. Does that answer your question? Dave?
Yes.
Well, are we, yeah, are we going to go open on the 18th? For a council meeting?
Well, it looks like, I didn't really hear any objections, so I don't see why not. Yeah. So, yeah, I'll schedule it for in-person meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Darcy.
When, when they open that back up, do we have to adhere to the six feet social distancing?
Uh, it's, it is possible. That is something, that is something we're going to have to look at.
How do you do that with audiences?
Yeah, I don't. I don't know. We're going to have to look and see if we can, if we can make it work. If not, then we'll, we'll change that decision and we'll continue with these online meetings. But I want to go through. I want to go through phase three again. I know Meredith has put a link to it here on our comment section, but I'm not going to look at it right now. But I want to look to see what the, I'm pretty sure on the 12th is when it goes to 75%. And so I just, you know, we'll have to see. I mean, if we're, if it's getting more dense, I don't see how we can keep that six foot anywhere, you know? How's a restaurant going to go to 75 or 100% and still maintain the six foot? So I need some clarification on that from the governor's office. But we'll tentatively schedule it for face to face and then over the next two weeks. And both, you know, before the agenda is posted, we'll make sure everybody knows. And oh, something else has popped up in chat. Looks like on the 18th, we will be having another street improvement package to consider on the June 18 meeting.
Mayor, that package is the follow-up for the items in the street improvement plan that were not, that could not fit within the budgeted amount. So that would be a budget amendment request to the council to see if you want to do roughly $550,000 to $600,000 worth of slurry seal in the current year. You'll notice we completed all of the resurfacing projects over the last two weeks and minus the striping. And so by that time, hopefully, you're going to see all the stripes on those streets. And you'll see some fantastic looking streets here in the community.
All right.
Is that, is that something different than the 500 or so we saw before?
No, sir. That's the same item.
All right. Mayor, I've got something I'd like to, for future agenda.
Yes.
Probably on July 2, a work session on our water conservation ordinance to deal with the issues that Councilmember Dobler raised and some other stuff that I've found that send a memo that, or the email that I sent out. We've got three ordinances that address water conservation and reuse or the use of the affluent water. And I found some inconsistencies. But in any case, I would hope we could have a workshop on those ordinances to deal with water conservation. Josh, or Arch's point was to go to normal or back to the old trigger points that Ron mentioned, which instead of 900,000 acre feet would be 1.4, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just looking for a work session on July 2 and potentially give some direction to staff about bringing some ordinances later.
Okay.
Mayor, we'd also like to put on there for future council agenda items, the sign ordinance. Make sure that's on there.
All right. Yes, Arch.
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I would like to to talk about. With regard to signage, Josh, are we ever going to put up signs that declare that we're a scenic city? We have discussion about that.
Mayor, yes. Just to answer real quick, the goal is yes, but we want to have it as part of the bigger discussion in terms of what type of signage. We don't want to put up something that's a, that's not, it's almost an oxymoron to put up signs to say that you're a scenic city when part of the beauty of that is that you don't have a lot of signs, but we want to do it the right way.
That's correct. So could we have that as a discussion point?
When do you want it on there?
On the next one. On the next council meeting.
On the 18th?
Yes, sir. Can we, can we also discuss the expired water agreement with Craver Estates?
Let's see the.
That agreement, it has expired and I think we need to have discussion about that.
All right.
And then also, I'd like to have some consideration performing a subcommittee to study our water rates and our water rate structure. I've shared my initial findings of a comparison of water rates around Lake Travis with Josh and Councilman Robbins. And I'd like to continue that study with the help of someone else to form a three-person subcommittee.
All right, you won that on the June 18 as well.
Yes, sir.
All right. What else?
That's all I have.
Anybody else?
That's enough to get us through June, Mayor.
All right, yeah. June 18 is next meeting stacking up to be quite full. Yes, Darcy, did you have something?
Yeah, I didn't see that you announced, because I saw on your Facebook page about people who wanted to run, they have to be signed up by a certain time to be up on the ballot to become, I believe it's city council members. And I'm thinking, hopefully, you elaborate on that at one of these meetings a little more so people understand the process.
Yes, I had planned to make, make those announcements in July because it doesn't start till the end of July, so.
I thought it, I thought it said July 4 or 3 or something like that on your announcement, but I'll go look back at it. Thank you.
I think it's like July 20 through August 17 or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any agenda items? All right, if we are done, I will call this meeting adjourned. I know, well, let me back that up. I don't have that on the agenda, but is there any reason we need to go into executive session after this? All right, I'll call this meeting adjourned at 9:03 PM. Y'all have a wonderful weekend. Supposed to be hot.